Good evening. We are here for the conference on DPW and trash issues around the city. So we're going to open the meeting.
Councilor Garcia?
Present.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilor Brown? Councilor Lopez?
Yeah.
Excuse me. Those are the three members that are on the Public Works Subcommittee. And I'll also make note of those that are here in attendance to witness the conference. Councilor Vidal?
A participant has joined the meeting.
Councilor Avellaneda, he's not here.
Hello?
Councilor Vega Maldonado? Councilor Robinson? Councilor Taylor?
I'm here.
Council Lopez is here. Councilor Brown is also here. And Councilor Zabit?
Present.
You have a quorum. And Councilor Recuca. I had you checked off what I called. The call of the meeting, the following subject matter will be discussed. Discuss increasingly emergent issue of trash on sidewalks, streets, public and private properties throughout the city. Officials invited to attend the Subcommittee meeting. City Manager Tom Ambrosino, he is here. Honorable Members of the Council. DPW Commissioner Fidel Martez, he is here. ISD Director Mike McIntyre, also here. And General Members of the public. The request for the Subcommittee was Councilor Zabit.
Before we continue to this meeting, which is one recognize Lisa Santagate, who is member of the Community Enhancement Team.
Okay. And you want to have opening remarks?
And open his remarks. The meeting was called by Councilor Zabit, so please, you have the word.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, everyone who's attending. Thank you, City Manager and Commissioner DPW, ISD Director. Thanks very much for coming and all of you who are attending as well. So I'd like to just begin and explain why I've asked to have this conference. And it really is because, one of the reasons that I ran to be City Councilor is because the, because of the issue of what I saw as being a major issue in the streets of Chelsea with the refuse and garbage that seemed to at times overrun the city in different areas. And I hoped that becoming City Councilor would enable me to try to help alleviate this issue or try to understand better what's going on in a way that we can all come together to alleviate it. And there are presently a lot of groups who are working on this. There is the Beautification Committee, which is a meeting between all of these groups. And there certainly is a lot of work that has been done and is being done presently. But I'm just looking to see if there's perhaps further discussion that we can have regarding how, now that we have all of these groups which have been working on this issue for quite a long time and get a lot done, how to bring that up to the next level of addressing the issue. And I know that I'm certainly not the only one who is thinking about this among the Members of the City Council, among Members of the community, among the Members of the different groups that are involved. And it just seems like there is so much work being done and that if we could bring it to the next level to try to address the issues that are concerning to me and to a lot of, certainly my constituents and other community members, when I walk the streets of Chelsea, which I do fairly often. So not only do I drive through the city to get from point A to point B, but I also take walks around my neighborhood and around other neighborhoods. And what I see is that there seems to be, certainly it was more in the winter time, for whatever reason, there seemed to be a lot more refuse all over the streets. And I think that has a lot to do with the plowing that's done, the snow, and it's difficult to clean up. That refuse is coming from a lot of different places and there are different reasons for it. And so what I was hoping is that by bringing together different Members of the community and DPW/ISD, that we could look at what we can do to sort of ramp things up and bring it to the next level to address it in a way that feels like it's a more cohesive and a more holistic approach. Because as I said before, the Beautification Committee gets a lot done. And every month, there are issues that are addressed, there are issues that are brought to the forefront and they are addressed and they are taken care of. But it seems as though that, at times seems a bit piecemeal because things are being done in different places at different times. And a bit later, Fidel DPW will address the work program that we were talking about earlier that had to do with beautifying Broadway and not only bringing Members of the community, like the store owners in on it, but also employing people and empowering people to take pride in the areas that they're cleaning up and that they're beautifying, whether it's with the flowers or just making sure that their storefronts are presentable. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation. It's quick and if we could start that now, then that would be great. So as I stated, the purpose of this meeting is to identify the key players in the area of city beautification, which we've talked about, I've already addressed. But we can talk about that a little bit further. And what are the actions, the efforts, the campaigns that have been and are successful? What are the problem areas? And how can we make these efforts a bit more centralized and take the program to the next level? Because what we've been doing is good, let's step it up a little bit. Okay, next. And who are the key players in all of this? As I mentioned, DPW, Beautification Committee, CET and Green Roots have all have done great work and do great work in the city. So some of the successful efforts are the cleanups that Green Roots do, that Green Roots does every year on Earth Day and other events, cleaning up along the river and in different areas that have been noted to be particularly full of refuse. The DPW Flower Program, which were the flowers and the trash cleanup on downtown Broadway, which was very successful this past summer. The store owners and residents who either lived down there or drove by were delighted to see the flowers. And particularly, the store owners were very, they were engaged. They were happy to have the flowers in front of their places. They got involved in watering and that was a very definitely a successful program. The CET Sunflower Project. And then the partnership between the Beautification Committee and the ISD. So as far as problem areas, this is a short list. There are more than this, but this is just an example. There are various sections on Broadway downtown, which has a lot of foot traffic. It has a lot of vehicular traffic. Side streets where there are apartments, you have people who are pulling up, hanging out and throwing their garbage out the window and then moving on. Parking lots are a big area of concern. I just parked my car in the Chestnut Street Lot just now and I noticed that there is, it happens often, that the whole lot is, sort of collects garbage. I know a lot of that is from the wind, a lot of that is perhaps from certain, you know, people who are spending time there and maybe eating and just leaving their garbage. So, and then other areas, like around Dunkin' Donuts or even a block away from Dunkin' Donuts, you'll see a lot of cups and bags from there. And there are plenty of other areas, I'm sure all of us can mention places that we see. So as far as the issues, DPW does do a great job of cleaning downtown every day. There are a lot of people who are out and about, who are smoking, they're chewing their gum, they're scratching their lottery tickets and they are eating from McDonald's or the pizza place. And there are trash receptacles. The trash often does not go into the receptacle. Or if it does, then somebody has also put their household trash in there and that's sort of taking up space and then the bag goes on top and then it goes flying away. On the side streets, particularly in areas that have majority of apartment dwellings, the cigarette butts and the tree pits around the entryways, that's an ongoing issue. Then, for example, where I live is a side street that is a short street. So there are people who are coming there after they've ordered out and they sit there. And then, and even though we have, thank you to DPW, there is a trash can at the end of the street, it's still easier sometimes to throw the garbage into the gutter. So that's more of an issue of addressing people's sort of relationship to the area in which they live or where they're visiting. So these are just some of the issues that come up. This is an example of a couple of different areas. And again, we could show you picture after picture, but I know anybody who walks through the city, drives through the city, parks in a parking lot, you've seen this. So this is, and this is certainly not in all areas. This is, I would say maybe half the city, just spread out in different areas. So as far as solutions, as I mentioned, I'm looking for a holistic approach. Maybe some sort of a task force. So instead of having ISD go to different stores and, you know, saying, "If you don't clean up, we're going to give you a fine," which everybody is reticent to do. Nobody wants to give out fines. So I understand that and I also don't think that that's necessarily the most productive approach. So just like we have the hub in helping people who are on the streets and suffer from addiction or are homeless for whatever reason, and we have that sort of community outreach and we have that task force, how about having something like that to address this issue of the refuse throughout the city, which is, does not perhaps seem like the same kind of issue as scarcity of housing or food insecurity, which are two major issues in this city and particularly really now. What I'm suggesting is simply that this is something that we are all aware of and that we all do care about. And that is, it is a health issue as well. It is a hygiene issue, it's a mental health issue. It's something that, if you look at it holistically, we want people to be as healthy as possible. So as far as having a task force, how can we leverage the success of the city and community groups, nonprofit organizations by creating a community outreach task force? Can we do that? The task force would meet with residents, store owners and landlords on a consistent basis to meet them where they are in terms of challenges that they're having with tenants or customers or neighbors. So if their tenants are going out and standing in front of the building all day and smoking and throwing their cigarette butts on the street, how can we approach that in a way that's going to be, that's going to work versus saying, "Don't do that." By having this sort of boots-on-the-ground task force, we might be able to level up our efforts to improve litter situations on both the public and private properties in a non-confrontational manner. So no fines or penalties unless necessary. Again, it's sort of the way that we do the community policing, is that they don't arrest unless they have to, the police. And it's better to collect more flies with honey or something, right? Is that what they say? Attract flies with honey or bees with honey? Versus going after people and saying, "Don't do this, don't do that." Because as we know, with, in most situations, that really does not work. It is not productive. So that is my goal in having this meeting this evening, is the hope that we can come together and just increase our efforts. Because as I said, particularly, I think during this pandemic time, this seemed to really reach a pretty high level. But it's something that always exists. And it would be great to have a way of approaching it that you're suggesting to people, "Please don't throw your garbage in the street." You're having people clean up as well, you're having things being beautified and it's a sort of, it's a community approach. So that is, that's my goal here tonight. I hope that we can have a robust discussion about how we can step it up, so to speak. So thank you again, everyone, for coming and joining in this discussion.
Thank you, Councilor. Does anybody have a question? Any questions? If not, maybe we can hear from Fidel Martez, Commissioner of DPW, and then probably Mike McIntyre.
Thank you for having me, Councilors. I prepared a quick PowerPoint to go through for this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Ramon. And if you can go to a slide too, Ramon, that would be great, of that PowerPoint. So what, so trash is obviously something that we talk about on a daily basis. I answer calls from both Councilors or City Manager and residents almost daily, right? That involve, you know, issues, say for example, at a park like Quigley or mattresses on the sidewalk like on Maverick Street. You know, so it's something that we deal with on a daily basis. But what I wanted to share first was, was at a high level, describe what we have done so far, right? So the, one of the first, and I think biggest impact for litter control is that we have rolled out, thanks to the Council and the funding, high-quality, secure trash barrels for all residents of Chelsea, right? So regardless of the number of units in your building, if anyone wants a trash barrel, that trash barrel is made available to them at no cost. What we saw in the past is that a lot of the barrels that residents had on the street had holes in them, didn't have any tops and allowed a lot of litter to escape on trash day. That I believe has been reduced significantly. In addition, we have rolled out 6,000 identical barrels for recycling. And again, with recycling, as it is a lot of paper products, the small recycle bins would allow a lot of litter to escape. So these two initiatives were a heavy lift that we accomplished and we have successfully implemented in our city. Four and a half years ago, I believe, we, the City Council initially funded the replacement of sidewalk trash barrels. From the small plastic kind to a more metal, larger and decorative barrels. Since then, we have installed over 200 sidewalk trash barrels around the city. And we do our best to empty those on a daily basis. And we continue to install those anywhere that a resident requests, like the one on Webster and Spencer, we did recently. We just, last week, installed one on Tudor and Lawrence. So really, anyone who wants a trash barrel on the sidewalk that's large and decorative, please contact DPW. As Councilor Zabit has also shared, we clean Chelsea Square, we clean Bellingham Square, we clean City Hall and the downtown on a daily basis, right? So every morning, we dispatch three or four employees of DPW and we clean the downtown and our squares on a daily basis. Additionally, we have really focused on improving beauty around the city. So that ranges from the banner programs that are around the city, the welcome signs. We just recently installed illegal dumping signs on many areas that we think are a recurring complaint. And again, I mean, we try to do our best to respond to any issue as quickly as we can. Now, what's next, right? As the Councilor was implying, this is a holistic approach, right? The answer has to involve education, right? And it has to involve community engagement. So I'm sure you all saw it, but I just wanted to take a second to play the PSA that we put out. It was filmed in City Hall. It was very low budget and it was filled by Chelsea residents. Mr. Ramon, do you think you can, maybe? And as we queue up the PSA, the PSA was an idea of the Chelsea Beautification Committee. It's something that was, there you go. Thank you, Mr. Ramon. So the idea, again, of the PSA was to create engagement, right? Was to change the tone of trash and make it into a positive discussion. Now, what is next, in my opinion? Mr. Ramon, if you can show the slide on the PowerPoint. So one of the main issues that we have is that trash in Chelsea requires daily attention, right? It's not something that if we clean Shirtless Street on Monday, it's set and forget, right? What we have found is that there are certain areas in our city that require constant attention. And DPW unfortunately does not have the capacity to do it. And, you know, the level of skill that is required for that job is not very high. So what we are proposing, if you can go to the next slide, Ramon, is what we have talked in the past, right? So it's essentially creating a seasonal employment program that's hosted by the city where we create little hubs, right? Of residents that can take ownership of a particular area of Chelsea, right? So what we would do is, this would be a pilot, that we would hire employees at the start of the season and we would keep those employees until the fall. And this is a hypothetical distribution of how those employees would be. Obviously, we would adjust their placement as we go on. Next slide, please, Ramon. Now, when we came to the City Council a few months ago, you know, we really focused on beauty, on the flowers, right? We really focused on the fact that by improving the way that things look on the sidewalk, we believe it serves as a deterrent for littering. But I think we focused on the flowers a little too much. You know, the idea of this program is not to plant flowers. The idea of this program is to employ, employ our residents. So what this would be is basically creating 25 new positions. The requirement would be that the employee has to be a Chelsea resident. We would advertise the position. There would be a hiring process. And we believe that it would result in cleaner streets, in creating champions, you know, of areas that can create sustainable engagement with both residents and our businesses. Go ahead. And again, I mean, this is something that I've shared in the past. I think that to really raise our game, to take this to a new level, we need to deploy part-time employees who would be Chelsea residents, who would be making a living wage and would be an extension of what we do every morning in the downtown. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilor Recuca?
You came to this before, right, Mr. Fidel? Okay, here, I have a question for you. There's, how many, during the summertime, you got Roca employees, right? How many do you have in your staff that go out and clean the streets?
How many Roca employees we have?
Well, they go out and clean streets, right?
So we have an annual contract with Roca that they provide about four or five employees.
Four, that's all you got?
Four or five, yep.
I was told it was 15.
No, no, it's not 15.
So only four, okay. So I'm gonna have to make sure that there's only four. So we giving Roca money for just four people?
Roca invoices?
Cause they said there was 15 coming to you.
Okay.
That's what they told me.
I don't know, who said that?
So we giving them money for just four people?
So Roca invoices us for whoever shows up, right? So we don't have a set check that we mail to Roca. Roca sends us invoices depending on how many employees show up. Typically, it is four or five.
What I'm saying, you only have four people from Roca that clean the streets?
Typically, yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm gonna have to make sure that, cause they told me to have 15. The next one is, during the summertime, don't we have a program for, the city puts out, for these young men and women, some work in the city and some work outside cleaning, sweeping? I seen them. How many of them clean the streets?
So in the summer program, we hire summer supervisors, right? However, that program is heavily overlapped with the larger summer employment program, right? That is hosted by La Colaborativa. Last summer in particular, because of COVID and the year before that, we saw a large reduction in the employees that are actually doing that. Because they are shifting the tasks of summer youth to more technology-based jobs, right? So last summer, we hired four summer youth for DPW.
I was just wondering, what is the total amount of all these people we have in the summertime that the city employs for cleaning the streets or some work in City Hall? But the bulk of them are cleaning, they go outside, they clean, they stay in the schools, they clean the schools. I was just wondering, what is the total amount that the city has? What you telling me, Roca only has four, but what I was told, they got 15. So there's a big discrepancy there. And the next thing I wanted to know about this is, the cost. You're gonna have them for seven months out of the year, right?
That's a proposal, sure.
According to what you have here, it says seven months.
Yep.
From, what is that, April to?
To October.
October. So out of seven months, so you say the total cost is gonna be 296, 292, 292,000, right?
Yes, sir.
So now, once you, these employees and get, they go under the city, right? Even if they're part-time employees, does the city, cause I know, I want the City Manager to tell me, these employees will have to get health insurance and these employees will be entitled? Well, I don't know about that. Well, I don't know, but I'm asking Tom, this is a question I'm asking. Well, this is, the next thing, will they be entitled to go out and collect unemployment for the other months? That's something else. So they no longer become part-time employees. Cause the city picks up all, 90% of the unemployment. So now they're no longer part-time employees, they're full-time employees. If they, that's what I wanna hear from Mr. Ambrosino.
Yeah, I'll take a stab at it and then I'll give it to Tom. So following our meeting last time, we spoke to our Director of HR, right? So if employees are kept under 19 hours, right? They're considered part-time. So if employees are kept under 19 hours, right, they're considered part-time and are not benefit-eligible, they are not benefit-eligible. So what that means is that they can't collect health insurance, retirement, or anything like that. So that's not something that they would qualify for. On the unemployment piece, really, it's a state law, right? So...
State law, what?
So anyone that works anywhere. Okay? So anyone that works anywhere for any number of hours can file a claim for unemployment. They can file a claim for unemployment. So health insurance, they cannot obtain health insurance. That's clear. They cannot obtain health insurance for unemployment. Anyone can file a claim for unemployment. The employer receives that claim, right, and we can process it. We can approve it, we can deny it, we can handle it in that way. So it's really handled under the state law.
Okay, so in other words, it's very simple. These part-time employees become full-time employees. For one, they can go and get unemployment, which the city picks up. The city picks up the unemployment. So they become full-time employees even though they're not full-time employees. And for another, I think the city has to supply health insurance. It's a state law, too, that after so many workers, the city has to give them health insurance.
Yeah, so I can answer the question. Just, I am gonna present this to the council as a request.
I can't hear you, Mr. Tom.
I am going to include this as a request in my free cash letter coming to the council next Monday night. I have about 12 different free cash requests. This will be one of them. In terms of your specific question on health insurance, we absolutely will not be paying nor be required to pay health insurance. Temporary employees who work less than 19 and a half, who work less than 20 hours a week, and these will, are not entitled to health insurance. It is a state law, as long as they are temporary employees and as long as they're typically working less than 20 hours a week, you have no legal obligation to pay health insurance and we will not pay health insurance. The unemployment situation is a little bit more trickier. We will try to craft this so that we're not paying unemployment compensation to these people. My experience in Revere was very few circumstances of these temporary employees resulted in health and unemployment insurance claims. Although, I can't guarantee that there will never be a circumstance where we won't have to pay someone some unemployment compensation. But to me, that risk is worth taking in order to proceed with this program. This is the way that I was able to handle this problem in Revere. Every year, we hired a cadre of temporary employees from April to October. It was like clockwork, we hired 25 or 30 of them. In Revere, they happened to be senior citizens. That is not my intent here. My intent here is to hire anyone. They could be seniors, they could be young people, they could be parents. I wouldn't necessarily limit it to senior citizens. And my sense is that we just don't have that many seniors who are looking for this kind of work. If they are, great, we'll hire them, but it will be broader. But again, my experience in Revere was that we had very few situations where these employees were able to qualify for unemployment compensation. There were a couple unique situations. It was worth the risk, because this is really the only way, in my opinion, that you can address this problem effectively by hiring a significant number of temporary employees during this sort of warm weather period, typically April to October is the period we're talking about. I agree, we do, in the summertime, sometimes get young kids to help us, but that is a very narrow program. It is six weeks, this is six months. So I feel strongly, this is a good program and I'm gonna advocate for it next week.
I have another question for you. Since over here it says... The next question I have is a simple one. Are these people, let's say we approve this and you do it, right? Now, these people, you say these are gonna be Chelsea residents. Are these gonna be, each year you're gonna change the new staff? Or these permanent part-time positions for these 25 people?
They would not...
So each year, you're gonna change them?
So we would probably put out the same advertisement each year and encourage the good workers that we had from the previous year to apply. Typically, that's what we did in Revere. When we had a good senior, we said, hey, apply next year.
One of the description would be, right? If you're gonna do it, it's a good thing that you wanna do for the community. I'm not against that. But I'm in favor of you rotating each year. Give each member of this community who needs it a part-time job each year for doing it, but not the same people each year. There's 40,000 people in this city and I'm sure, if we were gonna do it, we don't want the same supervisor or the same people. I'm in favor of, I'm not against this program. Let me put it bluntly, I'm not against it. But I don't want the same people to get the same job, because then it becomes a position for the same person. If you're gonna do it, and I'm, but the way, if you do that, I'm in favor 100%. That everybody in this city rotates. You can only work there a year, the next year goes to another guy that applies, because that way, you keep the people in the city more interested in doing it and you give everybody in the city an opportunity. I don't wanna create 25 jobs and 25 people are the only ones that are ever gonna do it. Let's just create another section of DPW in a smaller version. You wanna do it? I'm not against what you wanna do. I'm in favor, but I'm against keeping the same people there all the time. I'm in favor of rotating, just like you give the summer jobs to the youths in the city. That's what you do. Each year, they apply and they go back, right? So that's, I don't want it to be a permanent position for somebody, a permanent part-time position. That's what I'm against. I'm in favor of what you're trying to do. But I'm against giving someone one steady part-time job each year. If you wanna do it for the community, like it says here, fine. Let everybody in the community, you can do it one year, then the next year, somebody else do it. So they gives everybody an opportunity, whoever wants to do it. And I believe that's fair and I'm in favor of it. I'm against me creating 25 positions of the same people getting it. Then, because you already have a massive other thing doing. You got Roca doing it, you got this doing it, you know, you got the senior program doing it, you got a whole bunch of doing it. But I'm in favor of helping the community create new jobs for the youths and the old, whoever wants to apply, as long as it rotates. I don't wanna create 25 jobs for the same people, because then what you did is you just created another section for the same people. That's not really benefiting anybody, you just created more jobs and that I don't want.
So I can guarantee you that these will not be permanent temporary jobs for any individual and my experience is, there will be lots of turnover each year. However, I wouldn't wanna say definitively that someone who does a great job, we wouldn't wanna say, you can't come back next year. I'd like to say, someone that really does well, we would encourage them. Apply next year, you really were a good worker, which is how we did it and how these programs typically work. It typically means that every year, there's a fair amount of turnover. Because the jobs are temporary, people don't tend to rely on these jobs. They get other jobs, they move. So there's always a lot of turnover, just like there is in the summer youth program. But if you look at the summer youth program, I would see that you would find that there's some percentage of kids who end up coming back the next year. They reapplied and they got selected. So I don't wanna guarantee you that there's not gonna be a single person who does it this year and doesn't show up on the payroll next year. But it is not a permanent temporary position and I know there'll be lots of turnover in this position. So there'll be lots of opportunity for new people to apply each and every year.
What I'm saying is, it's a simple question, Tom, a simple one. When they apply for this job, it will say on this job, it would only be for one year.
Six months. Exactly, that's it.
That's it, I'm asking. I don't want it to say, you get hired and then you assume that it's a permanent job for you. Because I want everybody else to get it. I want, you presenting this to us for an opportunity for the resident of our city. I'm not against that, I'm in favor of the residents. This program is a program to beautify, right? To help. So each year, you're gonna say, you want this job, it's gonna be a one-year...
I can absolutely guarantee you of that.
That will be the specification you will put on the job.
Correct.
You know, and don't, like, don't, you make them don't assume that they're gonna have that forever. That I'm in favor, if that's what you want, there's nothing wrong with it.
Okay, Consulor Recupero, we have Consulor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, when this was brought up the last time, I said, you know, this sounds like a worthy program in normal times, but I just don't see how anybody can justify a new spending project when we are millions of dollars short, you know, with our budget. And, you know, I just think this is an idea that is gonna have to wait until we have regular revenues coming in. You know, we're millions and millions and millions of dollars short. And so I just, like, you know, I'm not opposed to the program. It sounds great and it sounded great the last time it was proposed, but our situation has not changed. And, you know, I just think that this is something that's gonna have to wait until our economic situation comes back online. But I'd like to hear if anybody wants to try to justify it.
So I will. This is being proposed from one-time funds as a one-time expense. It's not being proposed as part of the DPW's operating budget, yet. So it's a one-time expenditure. We're asking for funds for one six-month period. A year from now, next winter, February, we can come back here and say, can we afford it another year? Was it worthwhile? If the answer is no and no, then we don't restore it for the calendar year 2022. So I'm not including this as part of a recurring operating budget request. At this point, I'm proposing, we have one-time money from free cash. We have a significant amount of it that got certified for June 30th, 2020. I'm gonna come to you with a bunch of one-time spending requests. One of them is this one. The most you're committing to is, we'll try it for this six-month period as a pilot and see what we think. If it turns out you're not satisfied, then it doesn't get renewed. It's not gonna be in the FY22 operating budget. So it's not gonna be a recurring expense. I'm proposing it as, like many of the other programs we have done, it's a pilot. You revisit it next year and decide if you want it or not. These are temporary positions, all the employees know. This program ends in October and there's no guarantee they're ever getting hired again or that the program will even exist after October of 2021. That's how I'm proposing to you, as a pilot.
Mr. City Manager, isn't our free cash gonna be needed to make up the deficits for this year? And if you're saying, well, let's spend it now and then come back in six months, you know, and we can see if we can afford it? We can't afford it now, is the whole point. And our free cash is going to have to be used to make up the deficits of millions of dollars that we are short. So I just, you know, I understand people want, I want to have a clean city. I myself have participated in more than one TND project to clean up the city and pick up the little nip bottles and, you know, try to clean the place up. I'm all for it. But when we are in an economic crisis, I just don't think it's responsible to have any kind of spending until we can get our economic machine back online. I mean, it's just, it's a, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
So, one thing, I just wanna be clear. We have, I'm not in, other than our typical deficits at the end of the year and a canful of accounts, and we have them year after year, those are normal deficit requests at the end of a fiscal year. I'm not anticipating any significant deficit at the close of FY21. We already, when we passed the budget for FY21, we balanced it by utilizing stabilization money. We will not have any significant deficits at the end of '21. Going into '22, I feel pretty confident that the amount of money we're gonna need to balance that budget is going to be significantly less than what we had to use in '21 and more in line with what we have used for reserves in all the years I have been here. Every year I've been here, we've used about a million dollars in reserve to balance our budget. That's typically what we've done here. This year was an aberration, we used 5 million because of our deficits. I think in FY22, it's hard to say yet, I haven't seen all my budget numbers, I think we're gonna be back in the 1 to 2 million dollar range in terms of needing stabilization reserves to, or needing free cash reserves to balance our FY22 budget, in part because our revenues are starting to pick up a little bit more than we anticipated.
Well, I'd be anxious to see those numbers when you have them. But, you know, whether you're talking about free cash or stabilization fund, any new spending is gonna basically come out of those things and this is just, you know, this is a matter of priorities. And so, you know, I just, I'm sorry, perhaps I'm a bit old-fashioned, but, you know, I think that when we take money from the taxpayers, that we should be, you know, mindful of how we're spending money, especially when we don't have our full money coming in. And if we're, you know, we've got a lot of other priorities as far as working down the debt on the pensions and so on and so on. Long-term stuff that we need that stabilization money for, not to mention the free cash. So, I mean, you know, there's a lot of other considerations that you're not bringing up that I think are important for people to know about. And, you know, it's like I said, I'm not opposed to a beautification project. I'd love there to be a beautification project. But when we can afford it and when we actually have the money to do it instead of, you know, taking it out of funds that are really meant for something else.
Yeah, and I don't wanna downplay, I don't wanna downplay the fact that we did, no question, we spent a lot of money in COVID and reduced our reserves. So one thing we do wanna start doing is restoring those old reserves. I absolutely agree with that. That's different than covering deficits. This is sort of restoring back where we were before COVID. That is gonna take some time. We spent 10 to 15 million dollars fighting COVID and that's gonna take some time, no question about that. I guess what I'm saying is, this program in the big scheme of things is relatively small money. It's 292,000 dollars. So I think it's a worthwhile expenditure at this point. The council will end up having to consider this along with my other free cash requests. I have about 4 million in free cash requests coming to you from Monday night.
I look forward to seeing it, thank you.
Consulor Savitz?
If I might just speak on, as far as addressing what Consulor Taylor has been asking about, I would say, number one, this is a beautification program, but it is more than that, it is a work program. So rather than the trickle-down effect, we're trickling up. We're employing people who live in Chelsea. We're not going to be employing people outside of Chelsea, we're employing people in Chelsea. We are providing them with employment. And the idea behind that, as Tom mentioned at the last meeting that we had, is that they are making money, they're employed, they're gainfully employed. Number one, that's better for everybody's mental health. Number two, ideally, they're spending some money here in Chelsea, whether it's at the convenience store, market basket, wherever it is, they're putting money back into the economy. So that's beyond just beautifying, we are also providing employment. And I would say also, as far as justification for wanting a clean Chelsea, there are, as I mentioned, there are parts of Chelsea that are very clean. They are very clean. There are neighborhoods that are clean. And for whatever reason, if it's because people are not sitting there and throwing their Wendy's out the window or it's because the neighbors have decided that they want to keep their area clean. or it's because the neighbors have decided that they want to keep their area clean. Is it where there are more homeowners than renters? Who knows? So I walk out my door and I am a homeowner and I do clean up and I don't throw my garbage in the street, but my entire street is covered with garbage. That is the first thing I see when I walk out of my door. DPW does the best job they can do cleaning up, but they, as Fidel said, it's not daily on my street and it can't be. I would love for there to be more money in the budget for DPW. That, that would be the best. But I, but I know that that's, that's a hard, that's a tall order. So yes, it might seem like it is not a big deal that half of the city has garbage everywhere and we cannot keep up with it. But it is a very big deal. When I walk out of my front door or a child walks out of his front door or her front door and all they see is garbage everywhere, whether that's on occasionally needles, if it's a McDonald's cup, whatever it is, it's in the parks, it's in the parking lots, it's on the streets. And as I mentioned before, it is not every neighborhood. It is not. So everybody in this room, maybe one person walks out and their neighborhood is clean. But then if they walk through Chelsea or drive through Chelsea, then they'll see not everybody is living like that. So again, it might, it is not the same as food insecurity. I understand that. It is not the same as housing insecurity. Absolutely not. But it is ever-present and it is damaging. It is damaging to the community to have to live like this, when, to walk out your door and see all of that. So I understand that these are really hard times and this is asking for a lot, but as you pointed out, Tom, this is a pilot. This is something we are trying. And in terms of finances, it seems to me that it is kind of a drop in the bucket. We, we have taken a huge hit during this time. This is just one little part that we can do to help raise up our community.
Any, any other city councilors have a question? Counselor Brown?
I agree, um, with, uh, a lot with the fact that Ken, you know, I mean, we talk about affording it. I don't believe we, the time is right to be afforded in this project. We've already had this project or this conversation prior to us with, um, the flowers, which was projected for more money than what you're projecting now. Um, we also have a program that I spoke about when I also spoke on this matter. Um, and we have a youth, um, summer youth program. We have Roca speed workers. We already have folks, and if we need to enforce the work, we have the labors. We have, if you wanna have the money, you have the money available. If, if Mr. Manager is saying the money's available, I don't see it's available, but I don't see a need for hiring when we already have programs that a lot of the councilors say that, you know, because of the youth programs, they don't get out and do a lot of stuff. Give an opportunity to make it a fishing program. You, you, you're looking for workers, you have workers. Uh, a lot of folks think that the youth don't do work. Gives an opportunity to put them to work and also, um, watch over it and manage it well. Um, maybe you hire two or three folks if that, but again, you have the direction of the DPW. I don't even believe you need to hire anyone. Um, I just think that, you know, we are underlining what we've been through this past year and almost a half now far as finance. And we, um, we, we're thinking that maybe six months of finance at, you know, half a million dollars or a quarter of a million dollars is not a big thing. But listen to what the manager is saying. He has many projects. Once we stop adding those projects up from the free cash, it's not just gonna be his project. It's gonna be another project and another project and another. It's money that's coming out of our committee or our finance that we're unsure. I've been reading the New York Times daily and everyone is saying if we don't actually start helping our folks to reduce the rents and reduce the commercial rents, you're gonna lose a lot of folks. You're gonna have an abandoned city. So it's not gonna be a lot of need. I think there's a big responsibility. The, um, some of the slides were shown. I mean, the commercial folks, whether Dunkin' Donuts, Bellingham Square, Prattville or, you know, ever that, they have a responsibility. We need to be looking at their, you know, their trash logs. We need to be looking at what they're doing to, uh, you know, to help us because they made a commitment that they would be um, responsible neighbors by making sure that they have, um, their properties and surrounding their property free of the litter that they scout. And that could be scratch ticket, that could be Dunkin' Donuts cup. You know, so we have to also do our enforcement. Um, by not doing enforcement, of course, you're gonna create a atmosphere that you have and no one has, wants to be enforced, um, with a ticket or a violation. But if you're in violation, if you get a warning, we have very decent and very good folks there in, um, ISD and DPW. But you just can't continue to let it go because you believe that, you know, we're gonna do it another way. We're gonna hire people to come clean. Well, we're responsible for cleaning. Um, so I just think again, you know, where we are right now, I would love to look at this when we've been, you know, six months, two years outside of the pandemic, post-pandemic, we're out of it. We're officially out of it. People are back to sitting hard full-time. People are not worrying to, you know, walk out in front of their doors and then say, okay, let's see where we are now. Uh, but to jump in this and again, ask folks to come out only because they're getting paid. We've done a lot of beautification projects. I've been a city council for a long time, long for none, and it's always been a lot of volunteers and I, actually, many of us, we, we're glad to see so many volunteers. So we take a step back and we let the, uh, the younger generation come in. So I don't think the right thing is always saying, okay, we're gonna pay for this service and we're gonna create a service because we want to beautify something. Our cities work very hard to, um, make this city what it is. There's been some difficult, tough times last year. I don't think you credit or I don't think you compare to what our city could be moving forward. But again, you know, um, I'd like to see again, all these, um, all these projects and what they add up to and how we deal with free cash. And then also see what we're taking in, and that's the bottom line for us to check some balance because we're supposed to be responsible. We've done very well so far, but we spent. And I think, you know, um, as we look into this stuff, um, we truly, truly, it's not just about, you know, creating a job. It's about also what's financially sound for our community. Because taxpayers are looking at us and say, wait a minute, is this really the most important thing right now? We just, there, there's no one that's come to us and say, oh, you guys giving too much money for food or shelter or rent. They understand that it was a difficult time. People supported. They may have mumbled a bit, but they could, they come back on top of that now and then say, okay, we're gonna take more money to clean up the place. We've already visited this and I think it's something that we, we're just moving too fast on. So, um, I'd like to see more and hear more about it with the full council. Thank you.
Counselor Savitz?
Um, just to address, uh, Counselor Brown, if I might ask, Mike, uh, from ISD, how successful are, is it, how often do you find and how successful have you found that is in terms of um, encouraging store owners to, to clean up?
I just, before Mike answers, I just wanna make sure councilors understand. There is no responsibility of a property owner to clean up the public way in front of their property. The sidewalk, the gutter line, right in front of their store is the city's responsibility. The, the store owner has no legal responsibility to do anything in front of their store. The only thing they have a responsibility for is to clean snow because there's a specific statutory requirement to do that. But in terms of litter, there's no responsibility. Mike cannot find a store owner if there's all garbage on the sidewalk in front of his or her store. That is the city's responsibility exclusively.
Okay, so, so let me just speak. So, uh, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, can I respond to that?
You're set. Uh, Counsel Brown?
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Manager, so you're saying that the Dunkin' Donuts and the McDonald's don't have a trash policy that they submit to us to state that they will go beyond their spots in front of their doors to take care of the trash? Like the Dunkin' Donut cups, the lottery tickets, the McDonald's, um, wrappers and so, cause I, we have a contract for that.
No, they could volunteer to do that, but they have no legal responsibility.
They do. That's how they come in. That, that's how they say they wanna be a good neighbor and they wanna support the, uh, beautification of, that's part of the beautification, isn't it?
Yes, but the point I'm making is Mike McAtier in ISD cannot find, cannot enforce any of those voluntary actions. If there's all sorts of coffee cups on the public sidewalk in front of McDonald's, Mike McAtier cannot issue a fine to McDonald's for that. That is litter on the public way, it is the city's responsibility to clean.
Okay, so we, so this happened. We bring them up to the city council as a subcommittee. We state that because you've given us this here document to state you want it to be a good, responsible neighbor, you're in violation. What, why would we bring them up there?
I'm sorry.
We don't have any enforcement, you're saying, correct?
I didn't understand the question.
So Dunkin' Donuts, they sign this agreement. They give this agreement. Once they come up, hey, we wanna be a good neighbor because we have these and we, we have these agreements. They, we wanna be a good neighbor. We wanna go out. We wanna clean in front of our store. We realize the bus, um, stop is here. We realize that 90% of it is Dunkin' Donuts, um, lottery tickets and McDonald's. So we, in conjunction of beautification, what we act, they sign something, they give it to us. They're in violation. We, we, we can't ask them to analyze anything. Why would they, why, why is it? It, it, it's, it's senseless then. I'm not sure how we can't find them.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know what agreement, I'm not aware of any agreements any of these businesses have signed. I'm, I don't know of any. I'm just telling you that the legal responsibility for cleaning side, you know, when there's trash on someone's private property, we can enforce it. That's a sanitary code violation. But when there's trash on the public way, that is not something that Mike can deal with through enforcement of fines. And most of what we're talking about here is trash and problems on the public way, which are the responsibility of the city. The only, so I guess the direct answer to the question is, no, there's nothing that we can do to enforce when someone voluntarily says, I'll clean up, but it turns out they haven't done a good job. No, we don't have any recourse against that particular property owner because that is not their legal responsibility to clean up on the public way in front of their property. It'd be nice if it were, but it is not currently under Massachusetts law.
Okay, so I leave that alone. So it's legally the city's responsibility, correct?
Anything on the public way in terms of trash is the city's exclusive responsibility.
Okay, and so we have personnel. How many members do we have of the DPW? How many employees we have there?
On the street and sidewalk crew?
Yes.
Nineteen.
So nineteen, it's, that's not sufficient?
Not to do this kind of work around the city. No, nineteen is not. We can't do the kind of comprehensive daily cleanup that the council's requesting and residents sometimes request with that level of personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I got a question. Uh, you answered from McAtier, right?
Oh, no, like that he answered, thank you.
Tom, uh, you said that, uh, like Dunkin' Donuts and McDonald's don't have the, if they don't want to, they, they cannot clean the sidewalks. How can we approach these business or homeowners to do their part and clean sidewalks? Is, is, do you have any idea or what can we do about it?
You know, I think the councilor said it's a cooperative effort. You engage the, the, oh, the business owners. You show them that the city's doing some work with putting flower boxes in front of their, uh, business. Lots of business owners will voluntarily take this on and clean. Lots of residents take it on and clean in front of their own home. They clean the gutter line. They clean the streets. I see the mountain Chelsea homeowners out there cleaning their sidewalk and the street. It's a matter of engagement and doing this sort of holistic approach that the council is talking about. I'm making a very particular point that it's not a legal responsibility that can be enforced with ticketing.
And if I could just add, if I could just add to that, what we're talking about, um, this task force and these people who would be employed seasonally would be a task force. It would be about community building. So they would be assigned to different parts of the city and they would clean, but they would also engage with the community. And then, and then you would have residents and store owners who would be interested in keeping up with it.
If I may, I have a question for, uh, Mr. McAtier regarding, we're talking about mess, trash everywhere. Um, we're not talking about dumpsters over full, all over the city. I get calls and, you know, I email you guys all the time. How often, or who is given a per, a permit for these dumpsters and who is checking them periodically?
So I have somebody out every day, Monday to Friday. They drive through the, throughout the city. They check the hotspots. They check the previous violations from the day before, the week before. Um, there's probably three inspectors on a regular basis, part-time.
And, um, how, how many dumpsters do we have on the city?
Oh, geez, I have to look. It's, 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 so we pull in more than $50,000 on fees, so it'd be, it's $50, oh, it'd be nine hundred, maybe?
Do they pick up at least twice a week?
All different. All different. At least once a week. Not always twice. Sometimes three times, sometimes four.
You know, and I know, there, there's some places that need to be picked up more than once a week.
Right. It's a never-ending job, trash management. And in the end, you do get compliance in every address, but it could take months, it could take million, you know, tickets upon tickets, and they could change ownership and then the problem starts all over again. So it'll, it'll never end, but we do get compliance at every address eventually. But this, and then the next-door neighbor has a problem and it keeps going.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can I, can I, uh, before you leave, uh, in an ideal world, would it help to have more inspectors or what you were just saying, it's one of those things, it's months and months and it's change of ownership?
No, of course more inspectors would help.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can't, we can't call every single owner. More inspectors, more tickets, but also more, more outreach and you could call, you know, call the dumpster company, call the owner and stay on them, you know, at, at a better clip and at a better pace.
So, um, a place like CVS, the, the, on Cherry Street is the back of the CVS. That's a place that I drive down and I see that often, that there's something going on there. So is that the kind of situation where they are fined over and over and over and over and they just don't comply?
And that's the other thing. We haven't really, there's a lot of tickets out there that are in for appeal. A lot of times, once you get that person in front of you, a lot of times we call and we can't reach anybody. So you write them a ticket, you write another ticket. Once they show up at the appeals, they kinda, they have to, uh, you know, they have to either walk the walk or, you know, they can't say it didn't happen once they see the pictures in front of them. They're right in front of the strip treadway. So usually it happens, you know, you go to appeal once, it gives, probably gives them the benefit of doubt, but they can't keep coming to, to the appeals and, uh, and, and winning. So kinda, kinda helps the process.
And a place like CVS, because that's more corporate, is that?
Some of the corporate places are bad.
Okay, okay.
Cause they're not from around here.
Okay.
And a lot of, a lot of the, of properties that are foreclosed or in foreclosure, you, you send a ticket to a bank and the bank doesn't even know they have it. Then, you know, they, they discover months later they have these tickets, cause there's just so many people.
So it's not that easy.
There, there are a lot of logistics.
Thanks.
You're set. I, I have one more question. Who give the permits to all these dumpsters? Is DPW low in ISD?
If it's on private property, we give them, yeah, we give all the permits to them.
Okay.
It's probably $50,000 a year in permit fees, somewhere around there.
Is any way, when someone come and apply for a permit for a dumpster, that you, you know, maybe, you probably already have, but something where they say, you know, the responsibilities, maybe, uh, more pickups a week?
We have all that, yeah. In fact, in fact, sometimes when someone puts a dumpster down, they don't get a dumpster permit. The, the owner gets fined, but we'll also send a ticket to the dumpster company because they're, they're supposed to notify us. Like I said, it's a temporary dumpster. They're doing a construction project next to your house. If that dumpster goes there and, and the dumpster companies know they need to get a permit, even if the owner doesn't, and, and, uh, you know, we, we try to hold both accountable, the dumpster company and the owner.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have a question for Fidel also, too. Um, you said, uh, you're allowed 12,000? You said you're allowed 12,000 trash barrels. When are we going to enforce the old barrels that people are still using? If you already gave up barrels from the city? Because I see so many old barrels that are still people using it.
We enforce it every day. I mean, that's the answer. We enforce it every day. The, Mike Sandoval does outreach to all the residents. We offer barrels, we enforce it every day.
Another question that I have is recycle bins. How come they're putting the recycle on the same trash truck?
So, we.
Are we putting all together now?
We've gotten that question quite a bit. So, it is illegal for the trash company to mix recycling and trash, right? So, if they were to cut doing that, DEP would get them in trouble, right? That's against Massachusetts law. What, it is not illegal to use that same truck only for recycling, only for trash. So, what the company has explained to me, and this has come up many times, is that they will either rotate the truck or they will make two runs. One is a recycling run, and the other one is a trash run. So, they use the same truck, but not at the same time. So, if, you know, I've gotten videos, I've got complaints. I mean, I brought it up to them. I, you know, they know that if they are knowingly mixing trash and recycling, that is against the law, and that's on them.
That's what I heard from people. So, my last question will be, you say we have 200 sidewalk trash barrels? You probably, I don't know if you check, I don't know, but they're a mess. What can we do about it to clean that up?
Yeah, and I mean.
I suggest before, I put in order to put plastic bags. Maybe they did it for four days, and they never did it anymore. But the barrels on the bottom, it's a lot of trash. It's a mess, stink. What can we do about that?
We can clean them. I mean, when, I think when you have pointed out which barrels are our mess, we do go ahead and clean them. I will reach out to our staff to go ahead and inspect them.
Maybe we power wash them or something?
Sure.
One every day or maybe two? That was my question. Thank you for, somebody else, city councilors? Todd Taylor?
So, I just wanted to say one thing about if you want to solve the problem of trash, is it, you know, you have some sort of preventative measures? I mean, I like the PSA, I thought it was great. But, you know, maybe there should be some sort of a concerted effort among a lot of different community organizations for, you know, an anti-littering campaign to raise awareness among the populace about, hey, it's not okay to throw your McDonald's wrappers out your window when you're driving, you know, or whatever it is, you know? Just a general awareness. I mean, some things you can never change, I suppose. But, you know, it seems like if you want to address this on a kind of permanent basis, we should be trying to kind of amend the behavior of people, too, not just, you know, paint and clean up after them.
Counselor Fidel? Oh, sorry, Savitz?
An aside, sort of, is the Chestnut Street lot, is that the property of Chelsea or is that DOT?
That is the property of Chelsea.
Oh, it is, okay. But it was recently paved by?
Yes, so the parking lot was paved as a concession of the project. But it is owned by the city of Chelsea.
Okay, so that's our responsibility.
Okay, it's one of the pieces of mitigation for the Viaduct project. They would repave that lot and the little one at the top of Everett and.
Could we get them to clean it up also?
No, unfortunately, we have to clean it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councilor have questions? How about Savitz? What's his name?
Deborah.
Deborah, have any question?
Nothing.
Lisa Centagate? No? Okay, so I guess, thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Adjourn, thank you.
Bye, everybody.